All the meeting to order. Hasid? Here. Seaman?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Butler?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Knoxinger?
Here.
McNabb?
Here.
Okay. And pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we have our public hearing and overview of the FY 202021 budget.
Okay, I'll be as brief as I can. So on June 8th, the board approved a tentative budget. That's historically what we do in June so that we compare bills throughout the summer until we get to this point and have our formal budget hearing. So legal notice was posted in the paper. Finance committee did meet last week on September 8th to review the budget. The budget has been available since August 7th. And so now the PowerPoint presentation. And give me one second to load that. Here we go. You ready? Any questions? All right. So this is our overview. We're going to hit all these points tonight. You've seen this many times, and I'm sorry, Mr. Butler, you're handling it.
No, it's fine.
This is our yearly schedule. And so seriously, we started this in January. We really kicked it into high gear about March timeframe, and as you all know why. So we're going to hit the education fund. What we're showing here is $432,000 of additional local revenue. The state evidence-based funding has remained exactly the same. It is flat. Federal revenue is up $105,000 this year because of the Esser grant. That was the grant, it's about $75,000 that we received, and that's to help with the COVID operation. Here are the adjustments, and I went through this in a little bit more detail with the finance committee. The adjustments made to the budget since the tentative budget. I'll just hit a couple of the highlights. So when we pass or approve the tentative budget, we had a big red number, almost a million dollars in the education fund. Tonight, it is, it's a balanced education fund. So where did we make up the, the, all the gap there? The private facility tuition reimbursement, that's a $200,000 for the plus. Then we also had some students that have processed out of our program. And so that was about $200,000 negative that becomes a plus. So right there, we just knocked off $400,000. We had updated grants. So our IDEA grant was up about double because of the way the grant structures are being done. It's not being filtered through Tazewell Medicine County Special Education. We will have some additional expense, but still there's about $70,000 in additional funds there. Our title numbers were up slightly, our title grants. We've corrected some of our line items. So every year when I go through, if I see what was budgeted last year compared to what the actual was, then I make the adjustments, and that's where we cleaned up the rest of the revenue portion of that. Okay? And then, so all of the other lines, we correct that to projected amounts. This is just a projection. All right? We hope that we receive all the revenue, and we can control our expenses to some regard, but we can't control all of our revenue sources. Okay? I do need to make a special point. The insurance committee met back in June to approve our premiums. And this is where we also covered a spread. In the years past, and Mr. Butler's been on the insurance committee, and he has seen the darker days where we funded to expected claims, and then we had bad luck, where we had a lot of bad claims, high claims. And so we shifted that methodology, the funding to maximum. Well, this year, because of the uncertainty, we looked at, we looked at our options, and so the committee funded to expected. That means we're taking on more risk if we have high claims. Okay? But I'm pleased to report we have $1.3 million in our health trust fund. That is a huge fund balance for them, and so we're okay with the risk. When we fund to expected, it lowers our premium, but the district pays 90% of that premium. So if we lower the premium, we're lowering the expense out of the education fund. So that's the other key component that helped shave that down. Okay? So thank you, Bonnie, for reminding me about that, to hit that. So now we're going to jump to the operation and maintenance fund. Our local revenue is down $106,000. That's to be expected. We're not doing a building project. Thank you. It's really, it's good. We have no Category 2 E-rate money plugged into that. Last year, we had $80,000 of Category 2 E-rate money. I did anticipate a second round of the school maintenance project room at $50,000. So we'll see if that hits. There is a list of the expenditures. We have $250,000 in contingency, and this budget has $377,000 in the designated future projects. Okay. Transportation fund. We reduced the athletic and extracurricular. Folks, we're just not going to be traveling this far. So we reduce that expense. Our transportation director, who's in the room, is doing five-sixths of the job in transportation and only one-sixth in the classroom. So we have to shift those dollars from the education fund to the transportation fund because it's got to be paid for out of, his services have to be paid for out of that. And then special services, transportation, as you knew, realized last year, that's all the out-of-district transportation that we have to provide. So I increased that to $285,000, but we're still looking good. Okay? This is just where we have no budgeted transfers out of the working cash fund. I like to throw this as a historical summary of the transfers since I've been here. Other items, this is on there. We never see this money. It's on behalf, the state makes this payment on behalf. Actually, they just pay themselves the $6 million. So here's our comparison, and I'm not going to go through this in much detail other than when you look at your fund balances, the beginning. The 1920 was what we, it's the exact presentation numbers I had last year for 1920. I literally copied and pasted it on over. So these aren't real. This is just, when I say real numbers, this was just budgeted numbers. It was last year's budgeted numbers to this year's budgeted numbers. And so when our expenditures in the ed fund only go up 1%, that's pretty doggone good considering salaries on average, 3.25% increase. So we're controlling the expenditures. Then you got the building fund. You can see where our expenditures are way down because we're not paying for a building out of that fund this year. And then our other two funds that make up the operating funds is transportation. You'll notice a 24% drop in expenditures. To remind you, last year, we transferred $300,000 out of the transportation fund to the ed fund. Okay? We don't have that transfer in there, but that's one of the reasons why, you know, last year, we spent a million dollars or budgeted for a million dollars. That was just kind of relieving the fund balance that had accumulated. So as you can see, we're at, almost at $700,000 in our fund balance. We could almost operate without receiving any funds for a year. That's a good position to be in. Okay? And then the working cash, no changes there. All right, so here's where I show you the fuzzy math. Total revenues that are budgeted, 21 million. Total expenditures, just over that amount. So it comes out as a red number. But built into all of the expenditures is $500,000 of contingency expense, of which we really have never spent that money. Okay? That takes special port of action. So if you back out that $500,000 for a $377,000, okay? That's all the presentation I have. Any questions?
Could you just review for the board that our state funding is staying steady, but that's on the assumption that the law will pass, you know, the new budget principle will pass in November?
Yeah.
And I just want to know, because it changes everything if that doesn't pass, right?
It could. I don't want to say, I mean, I have not received anything that said that this will happen if, and if then. The state has, has in the past used the proration. And so if, if we're set to get three, just over $3 million from state in evidence-based funding, they could prorate that, and we could receive less state revenue. The other thing that happens is the mandated categorical payments. So our out-of-district tuition reimbursement, that's to come in for installments. I think we got two last year in the proper fiscal year. So the state does a, they will not make their timelines. They'll allocate the money, but they, the comptroller's office doesn't end up sending it out until after we get through the fiscal year. So best and worst-case scenario, I try to give you the best. Worst-case scenario, we have fund balance. We can continue to make adjustments if needed. I think we're in a good position for the district to be in with COVID. I don't think that we're losing anything in the delivery of services. And that's what our mission is here for the kids. So we'll see what happens at the election time. We'd like to, I think I'm most comfortable as saying, you know, let's take it day by day until we get to that point, and then if we need to, we'll adjust and make the necessary corrections that we have to do. But I don't know, did I answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. You know, the graduated income tax could potentially impact this, but we just don't know. And it may well, it may come up then. And the way you said so.
Yeah. Good question.
Yep.
What other questions do you have? Because if you don't have any other questions, then we turn it over to the board president.
Whose computer is locked up?
Okay, well, basically, you can just ask if there's anyone in the audience, Steve, that would like to make a comment.
Can I just? So do we have any comments as the resolution is presented, and I can't?
It just says, we got to approve the resolution. That's up there on the screen.
Yes, cool. Right. So we're going to approve the resolution as, but we're not voting on it until later.
No, you have to vote on this one.
Okay.
And then there'll be an action item later in the board.
All right, so can we, do we need a motion in a second then?
Yes.
To approve the resolution as presented?
This is coming from committee.
This is just for the hearing. We're just in the hearing right now. So we've got a, the district makes their presentation, and then any community members.
But do I include it all? Okay. So I'll just read through the resolution. Whereas a public hearing on the 20202021 budget for District 30 was advertised as required, and whereas the tentative budget was available for public inspection at the school from August 7th through September 14th, 2020, and whereas the public was given the opportunity to speak in public session regarding the tentative budget, now therefore be resolved that District 30 has complied with the requirements of the School Code of Illinois prior to the adoption of this District 202021 budget. Do we have a motion to adjourn? So move.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments? Are you a full call? McNabb?
Yes.
Knoxinger?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Luster?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Nessan?
Yes.
Number five, visitors and correspondence. Nobody? All right. Onto reports. Number one, the enrollment report.
You should have a copy of that in your board book.
I'll bring it to you.
Right now, our current enrollment shows that we have 1,436 students enrolled. I believe we're at 1,437 last month, so it's good.
Is that about what our projections?
It's pretty close.
Pretty close?
I think we had it at about 1,450, so we're down by about 14 kids.
All right. Anything else? Names report?
I don't think there's any of those.
All right.
Well, it is, but it's in the work packet for you guys only. Because it's discipline.
Athletic directors' report.
Yep. You can see that we do have some sports going on right now. So he reported out a little bit about girls tennis, boys and girls golf, boys and girls cross-country, girls swim, and you know, middle line eye update, which talks about a few things that are going on. The middle line eye has, and I will bring this up just so that everybody's taken a look at it, has a conference come together with spectator guidelines. So those guidelines are attached. Every school in the conference is doing the same thing. So one of the nice things that's happened during this pandemic is that the middle line eye has talked about doing things as a unit rather than like individual schools hanging out there. We're working together very closely with our conference schools to provide the same thing. So things are consistent when people show up at schools and they know what to expect.
And are those guidelines basically the just pretty much parents?
Yes. Yep. Yep, and they're all tied to what the state is telling us, for example. Indoor gatherings are limited to a total of 50 individuals in one space. And in case you're wondering what that means, by the time you put, and I'll use basketball as an example, two basketball teams, official scorekeepers, all of that in a room, there's not a lot of space for spectators. So we're talking about, all the middle line eye schools are talking about how they can record and get it out online.
Yeah. And I noticed that where the, and especially Herb, I guess, here, as the middle line eye president is here.
Yes. It's only here to run along the line.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
And I would just say I went to the cross-country parent meeting, and I think you were there as well. And Herb was there and showed up and did a great job of making it absolutely clear to the parents. I mean, I was really impressed that it was a full-court press on, this is how we're going to do it, and if we do it well, we get to play. Best chance. And they had the, they also had the senior night, the night of the first meeting, because they're like, we're going to get senior night in before we potentially get canceled. So, right, lots of good planning here to try to make the most for the kids.
And because of our limits on people, you might not see the full administrative load you would have in the past, because that won't.
Uh huh. Yep.
You know, three of us can take a spot with three hands if they're potentially.
Anything else on the athletic director report? Not the financial reports?
Okay, so here's the investment and insurance report. If you take a look, let's go down to the insurance, the bottom bar graph. You know, I've never seen that many months where we've been under. So it's cracked up a little bit, but it's actually started to taper back down. And so when you look at this number, the difference total costs is where we were last year. You know, $712,000, we'll take that. That's why our health trust balance is, is getting to where we're at. It's part of the decision factor, why you fund to expected instead of fund to maximum. So the other reports are on there. Those are the EIS, teacher and administrator pay. That is for fiscal year 20. We are required to post that on our website. It's for last year, even though we approve it now, it's for last year. And then the IMRF is the same deal. We are required to post those. So any questions on the financial report? All righty.
All right. If not, onto board committee reports.
Two committees.
It looks like finance and facilities. Finance. Brian, we want to address that, was mostly the.
Well, we went over the FY 21 budget, which repeated here again. And the finance committee, having worked with Dr. Sander on this for a long time now, was very impressed with his ability to bring this down. It's really a nice job. He should be commended for that, so great work. And then other, we, we're looking at bus leases again, because our buses are running on a three-year timeframe here. So we've got a team moving forward in that, which involves architapher as well. And, and I think that's about it. Thank you.
And then we had facilities.
We did touch base on the lead.
Yes, we did touch base on the lead coming up, which I think is no problem.
We have to pre-let this side of the floor.
On facilities, we discussed the 10-year life, life safety. And things were divided up into severe and the second category, and then recommended.
And we did talk.
I was just going to say, then we did talk about a footprint that we've been working on for long-term planning that we're trying to get to. And then Dr. Sander and I brought forward a program that would help not only do the 10-year life safety, being able to check off and have projected dates of when those projects would be done. So it'd be a little bit easier to follow for 10 years. And we're working on getting a project line timeframe from that. And I think that's from Farmsworth. Are they the ones providing that?
Actually, Farmsworth and MEP, the architect and engineer will collaborate on that. Just, just, if you don't mind. So last, last 10-year health life safety survey, you know, you get something like this, and it sits in a folder and goes into a file cabinet. And then, you know, Jewel asked, you know, hey, where were we at? Did we get all these items? And you get a lot of shoulder shrugging. This product that we're looking at having developed is a strategic plan, facility plan. And it'll be, it'll use this as the foundation. And it'll provide a roadmap of where, how we're going to get there. And so it'll be a living document long after me and Dr. Freeman and beyond, and future boards. And so it really ties into all the strategic planning that the board has done over the years. And I think it will, it'll be a great product for the district to have and say, yeah, we do have a plan for all of our future minds. And so really, it's a culmination of all the hard work that's really been done. But it is a, it'll be a great product to move forward with.
And it possibly bring in the designated funds of the project also, so it's all one document. We're not looking at a lot different. We also talked about the Tory update with the wall taken down and the concrete poured and that we're finishing up a few things there. And then we also talked about the historical bell that's working on coming in with Sam Miller and that. Was there anything else we talked about? I think that was it. Oh, scoreboard update? That was exciting.
I think they had just been going, but I don't remember if it was able to get together with the power company.
But it was a pretty productive meeting, and we got a lot accomplished. Tied up a lot of loose ends and moving forward.
A lot calmer than some of the meetings we had a year ago. So anything else on the board committee reports? Okay. If not, on to discussion and informational items. First one is in-person and remote learning update.
Well, just to give you a feel for where we're at, I think we have a little over 175 students that are now remote only. So the remainder of the 1,436 are going to school here in two sessions, AM and PM. That has gone really smoothly, to be honest. We've been getting kids in and out of the building. You know, we do have numbers. We're putting those out every week. You get to see them, you know about where we're at. So what we decided to do with our communication was to provide updates based on Thursday evening's numbers, and they go out to parents on Friday. That gives us enough time to go through the numbers, make sure they're correct, and then go through stages of review. By that, I mean obviously we have administrators to go through, and it goes through the board so that you get a chance to see what is about to be communicated. And then we send those out on Friday so the parents could see about where we're at. I wouldn't have imagined at the beginning of the year that we would be talking quarantine numbers of 50 to 60 kids at this point in the year, to be quite frank. I thought it might be higher than that. We seem to be doing well with our quarantine numbers. We do have active cases. Those cases, though, are not contacts that have occurred at school, which is nice. So it's things that happen outside of school. But bear in mind, we have half the student population. For the most part, we're able to really spread kids out in the classrooms and get it at least six feet apart. Not every class, not every time, but the majority of it. And on top of that, we have been able to maintain that distance for three hours. Okay? So three hours at school versus five, six, seven hours of classroom exposure. And I think that's really helped us to keep our numbers down at this point. I'll also caution everybody to understand, those numbers can jump very quickly, and it can happen way beyond our ability to control. You know, gatherings of students in large numbers, I think the universities have seen some of that recently, and as a result, they see explosions. We continuously ask parents and students, in fact, if you can be responsible to remember the safety precautions we have in place even when they are outside of the school so that they're protecting themselves and others from COVID-19. If they continue to do that, and if everybody is working together, this plan will work very well for us for the entire year. And that's, that's kind of the key to everything that we've been trying to do.
Anything else?
Yep. It's been, it's been a plus. So our transition team, and I sent out that information a lot earlier when we started developing it, we talked about level one, level two, level three teams. Those are still organized. And we still have Wednesday transition team meetings where we sit down and talk through some things. You know, one of the things that we saw a lot early on in the meetings were conversations about anxieties that teachers have. Anytime that you have large numbers of kids around, there's a natural occurrence that people are going to be a little bit anxious. Is that going to be something that impacts me or my loved ones if I'm bringing something dangerous home? You know, I think as we continue to move forward, I'm hoping that that alleviates a lot of that stress and strain, even though, you know, not everybody is going to be 100% comfortable. Nor do we expect that to happen. But we are working on mechanisms to try to help teachers to cope with some of this. I think the IDEA came out with some information and some call lines that they could use. We're looking into the potential of the EAP program, an employee assistance program with a local counseling service to see if that might be something that would function well here. We're having these conversations to try to figure out what we can do to provide for our staff to make them a little more comfortable as we move forward. They're all good conversations. Beyond that, I'm trying to think of what else. It's always fun to get calls on the weekend from the health department. Having said that, we've managed, we have managed to work with, with kids and parents, and everybody's been pretty understanding at this point. So we hope to continue with this process and see the ability for our kids to come every day and learn in person and maintain that. So anyway, hopefully that helps. Our masks are obviously a big part of it. It definitely changes the environment. I think one of the things that we have heard from teachers at classrooms are really quiet. So the kids aren't nearly as smart. That probably has, it's probably twofold. One, there are smaller numbers of them in the room. But also this mask, and you're feeling it now as you sit here, they're not the most comfortable to talk in, so.
As far as the students, have they been in compliance for the most part? And are happy to be at school? And those that have the reasons not to be in school, they chose to be in the room?
Yes. We did put out some information to parents at the end of last week, talking a little bit about the move to remote. We moved to either one of three options in order to go to remote. Just because we want to try to stabilize the system a little bit. We don't need this constant trickle of kids. We're already going to get kids trickling in and out of class, kind of quarantine. We don't need the extra pressure for our teaching staff. People just deciding, you know, I think I'd never just stay home. So it's, that decision by now should have been made. But we still have the door open for somebody who has medical issues if they have a real need to move.
And then I just have one other question. On the chart that you sent out on Thursday, I guess. On the chart that you sent out on Thursday, I guess it gets on on Fridays for Thursdays. I did have, someone asked me and I didn't know the answer and then you can clarify. So it was seven or COVID cases for our high school this last week. Does that include the week prior? Or is it just a snapshot on the?
It's that snapshot on Thursday.
On Thursday.
Yeah, and it says it right there at the top.
Oh, it does?
Yes.
I said I wasn't sure, but I just wanna know if it was cumulative or?
It's not a cumulative count. That ebbs and flows. We've had kids come off of the active COVID players, you know, and we've had some come out, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And could I just add, being on the transition committee? Like, part of what we learned is people can only absorb so much information. So there's been a real effort to put only so much out about once a week. And that form, I've had a number of people say, you know, can you add more information to it, right? But the more you add to it, the more confusing it gets. And that form is primarily designed for parents so that they can understand the kind of environment that we have here. And cumulative is not, I don't think, as informative as this is what's active right now. So I want it to work.
I think the problem with the cumulative is it's not accurate. It'll show, it could show right now because of the number of cases we had before the school year even began that we track in our part of the sheet that does this for us. We could be showing 20, 25 cases. That's not accurate. We don't have that many active cases. As of Thursday, we had seven. And one of them was symptomatic and six were asymptomatic.
Well, the question they had was, was it seven new cases or was it like some leftover from the week before?
Some left over.
So that was just, it's easy to say that was just for that Thursday, that's what it was.
Yeah, and they should see that kind of.
Sure.
Ride with the waves as we move.
And then one more thing. I just wanted to add that the administration has really done an amazing job. And I mean, I think we see that in the results, but they worked incredibly hard over the summer. Somehow Karen was able to balance the classes so that there weren't. I mean, I don't know how they did that, but I think that was an amazing feat to balance the classes. Because if you talk to the kids, they don't have too many kids in the class, you know. And if you get a call, you might find one or two kids are, you know, somehow too close. Constantly revising things. Every week they're coming up with new issues. Lots of honest conversations and very productive, so. I mean, they've really done an amazing job.
And this guy over here, because a lot of it was tied to our transportation. So I gotta give a huge shout out to Matt and Kurt. They really came in and they rolled up their sleeves and they looked at the best way to do the transportation, which then drove a lot of the balancing. So I mean, it seriously was a team effort and, you know, Karen, it's, it just. If you ever stop in her office and look at her big board, which she has, it's, it's like a huge matrix. And she, she sits there and stares at that. And I love matrices. And it's enough to give me a headache, but, you know, she did a tremendous job.
And they really just redid how everything is done. I mean, it was an amazing shift of processes to manage this, so kudos.
Thank you.
Well, I've read in the paper about Don La, I read in the paper about Morton. I have not read in the paper about Washington. Thank you.
Love to get to you, Steve.
It's, honestly, it's been a team. You know, I think the one thing that we're gonna keep an eye on is as we go through this, we're asking teachers to teach both in-person and remote simultaneously. And that's going to bring a certain amount of pressure. So as we move through this year, we may put mechanisms in to kind of relieve some of that pressure. And if you're asking what I'm talking about, you've seen some remote and blended learning planning days. We had one last Friday. We have one this Friday, not last Friday, Friday before. We have one coming up this Friday. You'll probably see some cases where we go to two-day blocks because we're on an AB schedule. That's why we give a two-day block of remote-only learning. Where we're giving teachers a chance to kind of catch the breath. They're still providing material to students. They're still providing lessons. But they're gonna do it remotely so that we're only doing it one way instead of both to give them a chance to kind of get caught back up on planning and paperwork and things like that. This first semester has laid out pretty nicely, but as we looked at the second semester, we're gonna have to put some things in to kind of give some, some pressure release just so that the, so that the stress level from the academic end, from the teachers who are driving this, doesn't get to the point where they can't function well. So that's kind of the same. I mean, we've said from the beginning, all of this is fluid. And we will provide that information early enough that people can respond to it. The good news for us is we have high school kids that's a totally different age level than elementary. You know, high school kids are a little better at home if they need to do remote. Whereas if you were to ask me, and I had my son in eight that, if he were alone. So that's, that's why we're able to kind of operate this way. We're able to work with a older clientele. I know I've heard a number of times, why aren't the elementaries and the high schools on the same schedule? We just have different needs and we have different expectations. And believe it or not, our three elementaries almost come from three distinctly different communities that have different needs for their kids. So that's, that's a big part of them, is what I mean.
I think if I were to pick a hotspot or difficulty, it would be the primary grades under this system because that means so much one-on-one and close up. And trying to teach them to read and speak and say those sounds with masks on. Oh, my goodness, I can imagine primary teachers and how they're coping. But they're in there and they're working and they're trying. It's all you can do.
Everybody's fighting a good fight, so.
Any other questions, your comments? Number two, resignation of Joseph Wright, maintenance specialist?
Yes.
All right. Number three, the six-day enrollment. Do we have that?
We do not. So for example, D-51 has not been in session for six days, so we don't have their six-day enrollment yet. But we believe we'll have that in next month's meeting. I just wanted to give you an update. We, we know ours, you know, we can pull out 52s and we can pull out 50s. But because D-51 had that big construction project, they just started last week. So we need them to get through this. We need to get to their six-day and then we'll be able to move on this.
And we have our enrollment early. Our, we know that. Okay, number four, the postponed summer 2020, 20, 2021?
Sure. Okay, so you may remember, near the beginning of last year, we discussed the potential of an art trip in the summer of 2021, going to Europe. Our teachers wisely came forward and said, we don't know that that's probably the best idea for this summer. We need to postpone it for 2022. So at this point, there, we are postponing it. This is your information. I have, I'll give you the actual dates from the next month's meeting. And fully recognizing that if things have not turned the corner, that may not happen either. Okay, so, but it's just, we do hope that in 12 months, this, our world as we know it has taken some sort of stance or some sort of form of something we're a little more accustomed to. And so that's, that's what it is to try and is just looking at the potential of having that for the undone.
And maybe the band can go to New York.
Maybe, yeah, yeah.
So no one had started signing up or put any money down on that yet?
I know.
Okay, so roughly simple to postpone.
Yeah, I think what they wanted to do was be able to postpone it to solidify the costs. So they better knew how much. You know, if you push it, a lot of times those costs will creep up a little bit. The company that we're working with was willing to push everything a year or so.
All right. Anything else, questions on that? All right, do we have any other discussion items? Back, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes, the regular board meeting minutes, August 10th, 2020. The executive session meeting minutes, August 10th, 2020. Finance committee meeting minutes, September 8th, 2020. And facility committee meeting minutes, September 9th, 2020. We also have our bills and reimbursement for professional growth. Can you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any comments or questions? Actually, a roll call?
Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Moxinger?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number nine is our action items. First is personnel. Approval of the non-certified employment, approval of employment of Lisa Fish as a school nurse.
Yeah, that one's pretty important. We have needed her a lot. You may recall, right before the school year, our previous nurse had decided to retire. And so Lisa has come in and done a great job. She has been asked to not only learn a new position, but to learn it under circumstances which most school nurses have never seen before. So she's done a great job.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the employment of Lisa Fish as a school nurse? So moved. Second, any other comments or questions?
How many nurses do we have now, Dr. Freeman? Because I know we, we needed backups because one just wasn't enough for the current conditions.
Okay, so the simple answer to that is we have one full-time nurse. But we're using a number of subs who are coming in to fill in every day so that we try to keep two nurses on campus every day. Okay, so we're running a double shift, basically. It's worked out pretty well for this year considering the number of phone calls we get to make. And, you know, when you get the joy of calling somebody to tell them that the son or daughter is in the nurse's office and not feeling well, they have these symptoms. And now they're gonna have to go home for a 10-day quarantine. You need a little time to be able to walk it through. You know, because they're, they wanna know a lot of things. And I've had to make a lot of phone calls on weekends. I've actually had to bring Lisa in one weekend. She and I and Lindsay Moore came and spent about three hours in here working on paperwork for Tasswell County, our own tracking paperwork, and then contact their parents to let them know about that.
Do you have any idea how much of a typical day this, these added reports and keeping all that information together takes? Because when I read about it in your notes and so forth, Georgia, I keep thinking, wow, on top of everything else, this is really a big added responsibility for superintendents and principals or whoever is responsible.
It is. We've felt the way, I've tried to keep it minimized. I've tried to keep it out of the principal's office as much as possible and obviously out of the business office. Because I think the people that are doing most of the contact tracing are set in the nurse's office or set in the dean's office. And it's, like I said, this winner who, who I work with directly from the dean's office. We tried to kind of split duties up from the dean so that we're working through minimal people so that our information is solid. So basically, there are three of us that are working on all the tracking within the district. You know, if you're gonna ask me what the amount of time that's put into the nurse's office, it'd be tough to quantify, but it's hours every day.
That was my impression of all the, working with Tasswell County and, and the health department and all they require and all they're trying to do to help you and you help them. Wow.
So, so those conversations, but the biggest conversations still come back to our students and our parents. You know, as we have to make these calls, it's talking through, here are the, here are the things. Here are the things that you need to know. Here's what they're probably going to tell you. We can give medical advice, but we've seen enough of these now that a lot of times, yeah, if people have a question, okay, so if my son is sick and we take him to get tested, what does that mean for me? Well, there are multiple answers for that, so I can want people to get through those as we go. But it takes time to do all of that. So, you know, if you figure 15 to 20 minutes per phone call and you make probably a couple at least each day, if for no other reason, just kids are showing up in the nurse's office not feeling well. We don't have a lot of that. It's actually been pretty good. I was kind of worried at the beginning of this. We had like massive waves of it. Because when we've been through cold and flu seasons in the past, it's, it's nothing to have 15 or 20 kids show up in about an hour and a half timeframe in one day. But that hasn't been what we've seen.
That's just common.
Well, it might. You're, you're right. But I do feel like everything we're putting in place is to stop viruses, right? So the flu virus is very similar. So you would think that the masks that hide you and the social distancing would also knock that down.
And get them shots.
Yeah, give them shots. So anyway, yeah, there's quite a bit of work, but it comes in waves, too. You may go a day or two where it's relatively light and then get slammed on another day. You just, you just don't know.
You're gonna roll the punches nowadays, don't you? The planning, though, is that we've talked about all for anonymous in so many different ways. It's been impressive and I just hope that we continue. It works as well as it is working. We're still open and we're still teaching. We're still keeping kids safe.
I think we had a motion in second. Yeah, so we just need a roll call. Yes. Seaman?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Moxinger?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Okay, next, adopt the FY 2021? Actually, it should be 2020, 2021 budget.
Yep, FY 21.
Okay, FY 21 budget. So do I have a motion to adopt the 21 budget or a vote? Motion to read high school?
So moved. Second.
Do we have any comments? Do we have some paperwork to get to sign?
Yes, I'll pass around five copies after you vote. Just make sure you sign in the appropriate column for your vote, okay?
All right. So we have a roll call. Yes, McNabb?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Seaman? Ward?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes. Just go sign all five of them. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Number three, approve the employment for WCHS co-op positions.
Sure. So Dr. Sandra and I were talking at the end of last year, just kind of talking about employment. Traditionally, we hire a number of co-op students. They'll serve in offices. We have some that work out in maintenance sheds, some work with food service. And they're, they're paid employees, but they are co-op. In the past, we hadn't done this, but we kind of felt like, you know what? If we're gonna employ students at this school, we should run through the board, just like any other employee would. And we do this with summer maintenance. So very similar list to what you see for summer maintenance. The only difference is these are co-op employees that are looking for the opportunities. So it is a little different, but we just felt like this probably shouldn't be happening.
And it's about the same number of students we generally employ in the office, just that.
I think it's gonna be down this year, just, you know, typically, Mrs. Stevens has had a co-op student in her office. We've had one in maintenance. I, we haven't talked as much as if we're gonna utilize that co-op student in the principal's office, but maintenance is kind of, it's up in the air, just with kids having AM and PM schedules.
That's what I was gonna ask, is it a little bit easier for them with the AM, PM?
It might, it might be. For us, it's just, you know, I've talked with Ryan about it in, in maintenance, that that could be a little challenging. And then, you know, just getting the kids' interest, you know, because we have to have the co-op students that want to do that as well. So it's, so we'll see how that goes. But this gives us a lot of freedom and it really is a great skill because we're gonna, we're gonna pay to have them background checked. So they're gonna go, so it really is a nice transition for the, you know, transition to a work-related field. And the students are gonna get a great experience of it.
So do I have a motion to approve the employment for WCHS co-op positions?
Can I move? Second?
Question second. Any other discussion? No other discussion? All right, roll call.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Number four, approve the 10-year health, life, safety report. Do I have a?
What's that?
Do you have anything else to say?
Well, I could go short and sweet or long and painful.
I think.
Short and sweet, okay, there it is. All right.
I know, I know, I want to talk about this, but all right. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the 10-year health, life, safety report?
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Anything else I want?
If they're going down to the facilities.
Right. Okay, roll call.
Butler?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. So I need a motion to go into executive session for purposes of collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees of their representative deliberation concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And there will be an action item. The call to, I got a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Deena?